Good evening.
Right, Dan.
This meeting is being recorded.
Is it? Is it now? Okay. All right, let's call to order the planning board meeting for September 7, 2022. I'll start with an alphabetical world call. Who's here?
Mark Brewer here.
I'm Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Kevin Hein here.
Yedra Hobson here.
Chris, you're here.
Chris Plex here.
Thanks. We also have with us our town planner Lauren Lind and our town council Carolyn Murray. Welcome both. And I assume Angela is out there taking our minutes, maybe not.
She's not live with us tonight, but she will be watching the recording and following up on minutes after.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Angela. All right, Lauren, could you let the public know how they can participate tonight?
Absolutely. For members of the public wishing to address the board, we do a designated public comment period for each item that is on the agenda. We ask that you use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen to input your name and address. You can either leave written comments or just indicate that you'd like to speak to a particular agenda item and we'll address you at the time that's appropriate.
Thank you. All right, so tonight we have four matters scheduled, all rather substantial projects. But I understand 534 Beechwood is asking for a continuance. So let's get that out of the way. Is there someone here that's going to formally ask for that? Or is, do we need to, do we need to have anybody from the applicant team on this one? I don't see any of them here, so, all right, so I understand they have asked for a continuance to September 28 at 6:30. So I could entertain a motion for that.
Motion to continue?
A second.
Thank you. All right. Alphabetical order, Clark.
Mark Brewer, aye.
I'm Kelly, and I.
Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
Yedra Hobson, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Okay, all right, so that matter is continued to the 28th at 6:30. Next, we have the continuation of the common driveway application for 94 Black Horse Lane. Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had gotten a legal opinion from our town council and we're waiting for a opinion from council for the applicant. I have not seen that yet, and I don't imagine we've received one, but I see that Attorney Watzke is here. I saw that he just made a comment in the Q and A function, so Matt, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I just wanted to comment very briefly. I, you're correct, I have not provided a written response to Carolyn's legal opinion to you. We can respond, and I think there are just some factual misunderstandings that her opinion was based on. But in light of that opinion, we have been looking at alternatives to the common drive application and have been studying that a bit. So that's really as much of a presentation as I really wanted to make, but I wanted to speak with you directly just to let you know that we are working on it, should be able to reach some conclusions in the next couple of weeks. And if we proceed with the common drive, I will provide a detailed written response to Carolyn's opinion.
All right, so are you asking us to continue that?
Yes, I'd like you to continue it to, let's see, meeting in October.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest our first meeting in October because the 28th is starting to fill up, our dance card is filling up in it, so. What is the board's pleasure? We have our council's opinion, we've given them the courtesy, the fact with the courtesy of a counter opinion. Do you want to continue it again? Do you want to make a decision? I'll do what the board's pleasure is. I'm fine with continuing it.
Yeah, I'm fine with continuing. Should we discuss it, or I'll make a motion to continue to, was it the 2nd of October?
What's the date, Lauren? Our first October meeting?
It is, we just, I had the calendar in front of me. It's October 5th.
October 5th.
October 5th at 6:30, so, anybody like to second that?
Second.
Okay, then we'll call a vote.
Clark Brewer, aye.
I'm Callahan, and I.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
Yedra Hobson, aye.
It's Plex, aye.
Great, all right, Matt, just, you know, to make the next meeting meaningful, one way or the other, get it to us sufficiently ahead of time so that I would like to have Carolyn come with any counter thoughts she has about it so that we can save time and not have to continue again, so.
I understand.
And then like, you know, and all of us to read it and understand it as well. All right, so some, you know, in a perfect world, we ask for things a week before the 5th, so if you calendar that, that would be great.
All right, very good. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, wasn't expecting that continuance, so we move along. So if we are, if everybody's here and ready, the next on our agenda is the continued site plan review hearing on 46 Border Street. Who do we have here for that tonight?
See, I know we're a little ahead of schedule. We have Susan Hodley is here.
All right.
We have Darren Kurtchen as our peer reviewer from Weston and Sampson.
Let me try to say that again, Lauren, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, we have Darren Kurtchen as our peer reviewer from Weston and Sampson.
Susan, are you ready to go?
Well, well, in as much as Adam was going to open and introduce the final things that we have to say, I would I would.
Can you give Adam a quick call?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just so you know, I was going to start with Darren, in any event, but yes, Darren should hear what he has to say, so.
Okay.
All right.
We're calling him.
Lauren, do we have minutes to approve?
You don't have any minutes to approve. I can go over the next couple of agenda meetings. You want to take up some time?
Sure.
So just so, while I have your attention, as you mark your calendar, a week from today, the planning board is meeting virtually to do training only. We're not talking about applications. We'll hear from Carolyn Murray, and that'll be an opportunity for the board to ask questions on whatever sort of topics that you may seek to talk to council about. It's just really an opportunity to do board member training, go over different topics and have an opportunity to get a little refresher and also some introductions for some of our new members, so that's next week.
Is that going to be live, or is it going to be via Zoom?
It's on Zoom.
Okay.
I will send that calendar invitation tomorrow. We also, our next regular planning board meeting is September 28th. As you've just heard, we'll be hearing the continuation of 80 North Main Street and be to a general store as you just continued. And then we have our October meetings are scheduled for October 5th and the 19th.
We're anticipating tonight that 55 South Main is also going to be dealt with on the 28th in addition to briefly tonight. And do we have anything else on the horizon for those October meetings?
Nothing currently. We may be getting a scenic roads application in the near future. I spoke with an applicant who was referred to me from the Department of Public Works over on Nichols Road, but they're really doing their due diligence and making sure they understand the process before they apply. So I don't know if we will see them in October or November, but you can anticipate that we will be having a scenic roads application soon.
Well, that will be, that will be new for us. That's good. All right, anybody else? Amy, you see your hand up.
Mr. Callan, yes, I'd like to ask, Ms. Lind, are you suggesting that our meeting with our council will be accepting recommendations for topics to discuss? Or are you indicating that there will be topics already specified and we will hear them? Because if it's to be topics that we would like to discuss, I have one I would like to discuss.
We do have sort of queued up a presentation and I'll be distributing it later this week for you to look at. If there's any other topics that you want to add or anything that you feel that you could use some more training on, I'm always receptive to take those and schedule something else if there's another topic that you'd like to address.
Thank you.
And I'll just note that while I was speaking with you, Adam Brodsky has joined us from the applicants team.
Okay, we'll get to it in a minute. Clark, you have something?
Yeah, as long as we're, we were killing some time, I'd like to just ask, I think this came up before, on the zoning bylaw changes, if, I think that there may be some broad categories that come out of each board's interests and experience in dealing with the zoning bylaw. But I'd like each, each member of the planning board to sit and think, write down, open up the bylaw, think about our meetings and identify things that they think work well about our zoning bylaw, things that they think are problematic with our zoning bylaw. And then things that might be aspirational for our zoning bylaw where it could in the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years, how, how the zoning bylaw could shape future changes to the, to the town of Ohasse for everyone's benefit, I guess I'd say, whether it's sustainability or, or impact fees or whatever it might be. And then we'll get that item on the agenda in the next couple of meetings so that we can, we can kick that stuff around.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and you know, just so everybody knows, on the bylaw committee, we are having people from outside that committee who are looking at and making suggestions on certain parts of the bylaw. Clark is, has agreed within that committee to take on some new initiatives like green-related bylaws and sustainability and climate resiliency, and I appreciate him doing that. So, you know, the committee is right now still only five of, hopefully someday seven members. But if anybody here wants to, you know, take on a topic or take on a particular bylaw section and do the deep dive into it, your help would be very much welcome. The bylaw committee has set a schedule. We're going to finalize that schedule. We're meeting again Monday, but we're going to start back to twice a month meetings and public forums coming up in October. All right, if nobody else in the board has anything, we can get back to other board comments later. Amy, anything?
I just was going to say that I would volunteer to work on climate resilience.
All right, no.
We can work together on that, Amy.
Yeah, yeah, and Lauren, again, I asked you this earlier, there is a model climate resiliency bylaw out there, so Lauren, please distribute that to Amy as well. And Amy, I hope you share it with Tom, you know, because I've always thought about him participating in that particular area, so. All right, so if we're here, Adam, you're here, thank you. Going to start with this, we have received supplemental comments from our peer reviewer Darren Kurtchen is here. I was going to start with him, and then Adam, you can respond as necessary. Yes, we have extra time, but let's not eat up the whole night. Darren, if you could really just hit the highlights of what issues still remain outstanding in your mind where we need additional clarification or materials from the applicant. I hope everybody got, on the board, got a chance to look at Darren's comments. It was a 14-page report that he gave to us the other day. All right, Darren, you got the floor.
All right, well, thank you, Jim and Callahan. I was just asking if you, Lauren, one of my colleagues, Ashley Sweet, is on the line, but she's listed under APARI. I'm just wondering if we could promote her to a panelist. Yeah, so we have a brief slide deck, about 14 slides that we can quickly touch on some of the items. Wanted to summarize the memo we provided last week on August 31st. Again, I'm Darren Kurtchen from Weston and Sampson. My colleague, Ashley Sweet, is also on the line, and I'll share my screen for our slide presentation. And please let me know if that's not showing up, but.
It's there.
Okay, excellent. So yeah, Ashley's going to get us started, and we'll switch.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashley Sweet. I work with Darren at Weston and Sampson as a planner. And I'm going to start us off on the supplemental peer review and then hand it over to Darren to finish the topics. And as you all know, this is a follow-up peer review to an original review that was done previously. So just very quickly, in the review, we looked at the zoning bylaws in section 7.1 and 7.3 with it was the parking and loading regulations and the site plan review regulations. And just briefly to remind everyone where we are, in March of 2022, site plan documents were submitted. Initial peer review was done by Weston and Sampson in April. Supplemental site plan documents were supplied in both July and August. And then this evening's review is of that supplemental peer review of those documents that were provided in July and August. So the review topics that we're going to cover tonight are generally related to parking and circulation, a variety of parking-related issues, and then bylaw compliance and constructability. And as you know, we've structured the memo and the PowerPoint to correlate by number so you can kind of follow along with the memo. The numerical representations here correlate to the memo that we've provided. So highlighted findings, a little bit more detail on those have to do with parking calculations, driveway widths, fire truck radius, ADA accessible parking spaces, parking lot lighting, erosion control, pollution to ground or surface water, traffic in sidewalks, demolition plans, and Chapter 91 applicability. So here we've represented through the snapshot of the site plan from the applicant that they are showing a proposed 35 parking spaces on their site plan. And this table represents parking requirements under the zoning bylaw. If you were to calculate what would be required, both by a seating requirement and by a square footage requirement, depending on the use. And we do understand that the previous parking for the property was non-conforming and that the resulting parking will also be non-conforming. But as a baseline to understand that non-conformance, we thought it was important to establish that under the proposed uses, under your current bylaws, 64 parking spaces would be required. So here we've represented also from the applicant's site plan their parking table. And the important things to note here is that they are proposing a time-dependent, use-based parking design that is allowed in your zoning bylaw, but it does require approval from the zoning Board of Appeals. Their site plan has calculated two different parking timeframes, the 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which you can see at the top. And they've estimated 31 parking spaces based on the time and the use that would be open during that, that period. They've also indicated a timeframe of 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And they've estimated 42 spaces being required during that time period based on the uses that would be open during that timeframe. Their site plan, as you, as we showed you on the previous slide, represents 35 parking spaces that are proposed, and they have indicated that they are proposing 10 off-site parking spaces. But there is no detail as to where those spaces are located, what the ownership of those, of the lot where those spaces are, which there are requirements in your zoning bylaw related to those, to those issues. So we can't give you a, you know, a summary of those 10 parking spaces. We just don't know enough about them at this point. And we did want to bring to your attention that although we know that the Old Salt House is not part of this application, it is part of the structure and it is, does share a kitchen with the proposed renovated uses. So we recommend that confirmation that this use does not currently utilize the parking spaces that they are showing would be proper to make sure that the parking spaces that they're providing are available for the uses that are part of this application. And I'm going to let Darren finish the rest of the topics for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. So just continuing along on parking and circulation, our memo highlighted the bylaw requirement for a maximum of 24 feet for driveway width. It appeared that the driveway widths are 35 and 55 feet, so we just were looking for clarification on, on that item or waiver request. As additional parking and circulation items, the initial March 2022 site plan indicated a fire turning template. The recommend, seeing that on the revised layout that was adjusted in July and August. Just, I think what's shown currently is a passenger car vehicle, which is useful, but would be beneficial to also show the fire truck turning radius. There are two ADA spaces on the parking plans that we've reviewed, but they don't appear to meet current ADA and AAV requirements. And there's some, if one space is in use, the other space has some limited access based on their kind of perpendicular arrangement. So we do recommend revisiting the ADA space location and orientation. And lastly, on parking, we were provided an updating lighting plan. There's minimal spillage beyond the property boundary on Border Street, but as something to consider, there are cutoff fixtures that would address light spillage onto the street. So moving from parking and circulation, we looked at bylaw compliance and constructability concerns. Many of these were met, but one of the items was an erosion control recommendation. We had to include anti-tracking pad during the construction phase. The applicant did provide this in a sketch, but we just were recommending that that's incorporated in future site plans. It's not on the latest site plan set. In addition, one of the bylaw compliances, compliance items for a site plan in front of the planning board is pollution to ground or surface water. An item the Conservation Commission had flagged was a concern based on a fair amount of demolition planned in the project is the management of that demolition debris, making sure nothing is entering the abutting coacid harbor. The applicant has provided a demolition plan with multiple controls to limit demolition debris from entering the harbor. One recommendation we had was the parking lot to the south is likely to be used as a staging area. So we'd recommend that the booms that are placed in coacid harbors extend along the east side of the parking lot area. The applicant is also presented in front of the zoning Board of Appeals, and we understand is providing a traffic and parking impact analysis six months after the operation of the new facility. And that will include evaluation of pedestrian and vehicular safety. We did discuss this with our transportation engineers, you know, baseline study is preferable, but that can't be done at this point with the facility being closed. So we just wanted to know, I guess, and fly for the applicant and the planning board, what sort of post-construction remedies may be implemented if there is a, an issue identified in those studies and analysis post-construction. And that will be somewhat challenging to implement in the new arrangement and parking lot. And then lastly, we just identified limited construct, sorry, constructability items, one on the demolition plan. Just during demolition, we just want to make sure pedestrian safety is controlled at that turn on Border Street. And then, as mentioned, there's the demolition plan to avoid materials falling into the harbor. We also, because of the demolition, the partial demolition of the building, just wanted to fly that hazardous buildings are assessed and sampled for and properly abated. Those could include asbestos, PCB-containing materials, like paint. Lasted applicant had identified Chapter 91 is not applicable to their, their project. And we just want to make, make sure as a project progresses that that is revisited as needed in case the permit requirements do, do come up as the, the site is situated on the harbor and there's peers that are holding the building in place. Those aren't planned to be modified, but if they were, some Chapter 91 applicability and permitting may be required, but currently are not. So those are all of the main items we highlighted and just wanted to quickly run through, so I'll pass it back to the chair.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Appreciate it. Before we get to Adam, the board should know that the zoning board, if they don't know already, the zoning board did close its hearings, but they have not issued a written decision yet. They are in the draft stages of that, so we don't have any particular guidance. Most of their jurisdiction were about the uses. There is some overlapping jurisdiction regarding parking, but you know, we have nothing in writing for them. So Adam, if I could focus you first on the parking issues. So the last time I know I asked what the plan was off-site and it was for employees. But I'm concerned by, you know, and I guess I don't have a problem with these peak calcula, you know, these different hour calculations. But in the peak use of the sit-down restaurant, I'm concerned that it's also the peak use for the salt house. And you have employees, and you said employees would be located off-site, but your thoughts on, I think we should be conditioning this, that there also be either valet or shuttle service provided for, you know, excessive customer use, because you're going to be competing with this restaurant next door for the limited spaces on the street. And, you know, I just your thoughts about on resolving this parking and how, how soon are we to expect something off-site to be solid and in place?
Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, and I work for Co-Lobster LLC. Amen Omara, our project manager, could not be here this evening. Tom Sullivan may be in the audience and may wish to be promoted. I see Susan Hodley and Karina Martinez are architects, and Gabriel Pradilla should be here on behalf of Grady. And yes, you're correct, the ZBA closed its public hearing, and we anticipate a decision next week. I should also let the board know that the Conservation Commission closed its public hearing, and we anticipate receiving an order of conditions. I'm going to respectfully disagree with you with respect to the zoning board's role in this. Yes, they needed to approve the use, but the principal purpose of being in front of the zoning board is to address parking and parking conformance. And the ZBA has indicated that our parking plan meets the zoning bylaws subject to conditions. They provided just verbally a list of proposed conditions, but I haven't seen their proposed conditions. And I'd respectfully suggest that the planning board really does not have a role. I'm not suggesting that you should not be concerned about parking. But I think the zoning board may feel a little bit bent out of shape that the planning board wants to promote its, its opinion regarding parking when the zoning board has spent months carefully reflecting and conditioning parking. One of those conditions will be securing the off-site parking for employees. I can get into the detailed zoning issue, but your zoning bylaw does not require employee parking for these particular uses. But the client has agreed to secure those 10 parking spaces. That will be a condition of our special permit, which was specifically addressed uses as well as parking. And we will not be able to obtain a building permit until those parking spaces have been identified to the satisfaction of the zoning board and respectfully not the planning board. So if the planning board is thinking of conditioning parking, you risk contradicting your own zoning board, which I'd suggest has primary jurisdiction.
Don't assume that, Adam. We can certainly be in sync with them, but I think under 12B. Don't, don't assume that, Adam. We can certainly be in sync with them, but I think under 12B. At 12.6B6, we have some say in this matter.
Uh, again, I, I'm not suggesting that, that your views should be not shouldn't be shared or that you don't have a concern. But at least with respect to this project, I've respectfully suggested the zoning board has primacy on parking. With respect to Old Salt House, uh, we're providing the requisite parking that we need on our site. Uh, we're not dependent upon street parking. Um, and we're not counting any spaces that may be presently used by Old Soul House on our property towards our parking calculations. It's an entirely separate operation now.
How do you, how do you anticipate keeping old salt customers out of your lot?
Uh, one of the conditions we discussed was to have a parking monitor. Um, that will be uh in the parking lot to ensure that we only have patrons. Uh, parking and that, but again, again, those are the, the detailed conditions that we anticipate receiving from the zoning board. The, the traffic study that we agreed to perform. It is also to assist in, you know, in a much larger and we is, is, is something that I, I, I guess we would have no problem with sharing with the planning board. But again, it's going to be a condition for review of the zoning board. And we're going to get caught in a situation where the planning board doesn't agree with the zoning board. Um, ultimately, we have no problem sharing with you, but it's got to be the zoning board that's got to monitor the parking. But where I was going with that is that there's a larger parking problem in the district. And we have agreed to be part of a larger solution that should include not only our site. Um, potentially the old salt house, but you know, all of the businesses and the residents in the area. And so we, we've agreed and volunteered to, to participate in that larger process. That's got to be a town-driven thing, um, because we're really dealing with public ways. Uh, potentially changing the, you know, the striping of parking spaces within the public way. Uh, potentially, you know, having conditions on maximum hours for people who can park. Uh, and all those sorts of things. So we're committed to uh to participating in that process um to address the larger issues. But from a narrow zoning perspective, we've gone in great detail with the zoning board, which again has indicated that it's satisfied. We, we need to see those final conditions also.
All right, and uh the other issues that uh.
Are you sure? Yeah, and I, I, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just address them briefly, but a lot of this.
I mean, the, the, the demolition and pollution potential of the harbor is within our jurisdiction and site plan review. Uh, uh, can I presume you have no objection to the added safeguards that our engineers have suggested?
It, it would, could I just go through the list in the order that was presented? And I'll be very, very brief. Uh, first, with respect to the driveway width. Um, and uh, Gabe can confirm this. Um, we're using the existing curb cuts. Um, the requirement at 307.3C3 says no entrance or exit driveway shall exceed 24 feet in width, except for a suitable radius of curvature at the entrances. We want to use the existing entrances because you need that width and that curvature in order to be able to safely enter and exit the site. And, and Gabe can explain that in more detail. So we think we don't need a waiver. It's actually contemplated by the bylaw. Um, we did provide a, a truck, a radius analysis. And we're happy to update that, given the new layout. We suggested that is certainly an appropriate condition of any site plan approval. I believe we have a respectful disagreement regarding ADA accessibility, and I'll have to rely upon Gabe to do that. Uh, with respect to parking lot of and making sure that there's no uh light runoff. On the, in the public way, uh, that's something that the board appropriately can condition. Um, it's simply from our perspective, we would have to specify the appropriate shades for, for the fixtures. Uh, with respect to extending the boom, um, the conservation commission was satisfied with our erosion control measures. But we have no objection to extending the boom provided, for example, the harbor master doesn't have a problem with that. Um, so that uh certainly appropriate for a condition. Um, again, I spoke to the traffic report. Uh, it's unclear, well, to us at least, what uh, what your consultant is, is asking with respect to the demolition plans. That's a building permit issue and, and, and would be under the purview of the building departments or any conditions relating to that. I think would be addressed through the building department. You know, but if there anything, if there are specifics that they want conditioned, um, I, you know, we're happy to, to address. So that was, uh, and with respect to chapter 91. Um, uh, it's, it was nice to see that, that uh Weston Sampson agrees that. The renovation we're proposing doesn't require a new license, which is what we, we said. Um, but we obviously agree if there's any change in the project that changes the scope and that scope falls within chapter 91. We've got to comply with the law, so we don't disagree with that. Um, chapter 91 does have maintenance provisions in its regulations, so certain maintenance activities are allowed, you know. Uh, um, within the scope of the regulations. So I don't, I don't know whether, for example, if we have to replace a. Uh, a piling, uh, that that would necessarily trigger the need for a new license or amendment of the license. But that's just a requirement of law that we'll have to comply with. So those are my quick responses and, and if you'd like to hear from Gabe, uh, um, on the ADA, then that might be helpful.
Yeah, you only mentioned Gabe to talk about the ADA thing. I would like to hear from him on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon. Um, if I could share my screen here. Here we have the accessible spaces. Uh, the location of the spaces to us was the most practicable, uh, because it connects directly to um the area. Um, which would be pretty much a public area, so it would be accessible to everyone. Uh, also, the configuration of the parking pretty much is a product of the site itself. We wanted to keep the same layout. Um, that way we can, as uh allowed by ADA, we are overlapping the, the access aisles. Access aisles need to be the same length as the parking that they serve, which is up to in here where it says van accessible here. And straight across this line. So, um, they do overlap. Uh, however, the. Um, the concern was if there is a vehicle, um, parked here. Um, and then another van comes here, they won't be able to park on the line in order to uh offload to the other side. Um, we believe that is um not a purview of the ADA in this case. Uh, ADA regulations just call out dimensions. Um, we comply with those. Um, and as far as uh compliance with ADA, we believe we comply with all the regulations in ADA.
Um, all right, Darren, if you're, you still out there?
Yes, yeah, no, um, so, right, and that is the concern that if the. ADA space is being used at space 13 shown here, um, that drive aisle that. Hatch diagonal line needs to be also accessible for a van because that is part of the parking space. Um, and it would not be accessible so that. Our interpretation is it was not conforming with ADA and the Mas A. Uh, these standards, um, we would have preferred to see these parallel to each other. It's a much more. That would kind of solve the problem, but um, obviously it's redesigned, so we don't want to, we're not redesigning what's here, but we're finding that it's not meeting. Uh, the ADA requirement.
Would swapping spaces 12 and 14 solve the problem?
Uh, yeah, they were parallel to each other and that drive aisle issue would go away because then it's not blocked. So, yeah, any parallel configuration would, would, you know, you still need the two spaces by the bylaws, but um. We're talking about ADA requirements.
So if, if, but if space 14 was a non-handicap space, that wouldn't create a blockage at all?
Well.
I mean, is it the use of space 14 at all? That's the problem. Yeah, that's what I guess I'm getting at.
It's, it's if, if space 13 is occupied with a vehicle, then the, the van accessibility of space 14 goes away. And that's, that's what we flagged is there's sort of an overlapping use, so it, it's assuming there's enough space for, for two vehicles, which we're not seeing is, is a.
I'm, I'm asking though, I'm asking if 14 was not a handicap space and was a regular space and you move the handicap to 12. Does 14? As a regular space, create a block, the same kind of blockage issue?
It does. No, but it creates new, new issues because it's, then you have pavement that's sort of unusable next to it. Um. So I guess, yeah, that's the design. I, I, I don't really want to be redesigning this or the applicant, but we're just flag that what we are. Our review of the, of the configuration is not in performance. Um, so we, we would recommend plant up parallel lines that can be even shifted. To the, to the west there, but uh we do understand that is the closest access point. But yeah, the, the van ramp would not be accessible if someone's parked in 13 and that, that's our concern.
Okay. All right, well, let's, we'll see what the rest of the board has to say about that. Anything else on this particular issue from either side?
Uh, yes, I have something I want to ask.
Amy, Amy, let me get to the board in order and you can bring it up. You're, you're actually going to lead off the discussion, so. Um, just from, from Adam's team or from Darren, anything further on this particular issue or any other outstanding issue?
I guess one thing we didn't fly, there's also snow shown on one site plan being loaded into that area, so. Um, it just that like during the use of the, the system or the, those spaces, uh, any snow removal would have to just be careful to not block. And if that is where they end up. Um, just want to tell us another pairs. It looks like a, a snow mounting area for, for snow removal is adjacent to the ADA spaces.
Okay. All right, we'll get to comments from the board. Amy, you had your hand up, so I'm going to start in alphabetical order with you, who's being the lead commenter, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Could we, could we have the map up again?
Of the handicap spaces?
Yes, I, I actually have the area that, that the map that was just up was perfect. I have a series of questions that I, I don't really know the answer to. So as soon as the map comes up, I'll be able to start my comments.
Right.
All right, thank you. So, um, I'm not sure about this, but I am under the impression that ADA requires. If you have a retail activity, that there must also be a handicapped space to serve retail access. Is that correct?
Uh, in what sense?
So I'm looking, I'm actually looking over here at the lobster pound. And um, it is a retail operation, which would indicate that it has certain hours, it has certain purposes, but there is no handicapped. Um, space here for somebody who might wish to uh purchase uh lobsters, lobsters at retail. So I'm asking, does ADA require that retail operations have a access for handicaps?
It's based off the whole parking lot. If there are mixed uses within that. Um, there, you know, it's, it's all based on the amount of parking spaces that are in the, in the lot. In this case, we only require two of them. Um, that does uh consider the retail uh aspect of the lobster pound, but that is considered in the zoning bylaw. As part of the required spaces.
And I appreciate that, but um, I don't think that there's any discussion about access specifically. That is where it needs to be. And I think that retail has a certain level of authority over. Uh, a, a set um, uh, access to a space which you're going to be up uh act, uh, sitting in for a period of time. If somebody wants to get in and out of the lobster pound, they have to be able to do that in a manner that is rather quick. And right now they would, could find themselves blocked in. They might find themselves without a spot. So I'm just asking to have a review of whether or not a retail site requires um ADA. Um, citing specifically because it is a retail. Uh, purpose. Don't you, I don't want you to answer it now. I'm just asking this question. Um, the net, the next question. That I have is, we've sort of danced around the issue of this particular geography for many reasons. But most of them because it's difficult. But I would say that we need to have a traffic study of a period of time. Where this area, the area from the salt house all the way to Governor's Island entrance. To know exactly what kind of traffic we're dealing with. Um, I myself go down there to uh get on a boat, I take my dogs down there, I walk down there, I ride a bike down there. And it's a very, very congested area, and yet we have not asked anything about the safety. Of the uses that are being proposed for the site based on what the natural traffic pattern is between the months of April to October. And so I would request that there be a traffic study, so we know whether or not we're creating a situation that we could avoid by understanding better. What the traffic circumstances are.
Well, let me, let me just play the devil's advocate a minute. The zoning board is requiring. Uh, six months out, granted, because there's no uses now. As a baseline, you know, and Darren said, in a perfect world, we'd have a baseline of existing uses, but we don't. We don't have that at the moment, and so. The zoning board is asking for a study six months out, and the question is if we find these problems, what is the zoning board and this board going to do about it? And, and, you know, we can condition that, but.
Well.
I'm, I'm saying isn't that, isn't that, I mean, it seems like that's the only alternative we have because we can't create a baseline, so.
Well, uh, I, I actually disagree. I think that there's enough aerial photography over the course of time for us to at least explore the possibility. That we know what it looks like over time in its usage. And if we're talking about doing a traffic study and we're saying we're doing it in the future. When we ha, we are still like three quarters of the way through, uh, through the most intensive use of the area. We could start a traffic study right away. I don't understand why we can't explore this now, rather than. Uh, in any way postponing it, because if we postpone, we'll end up being the same situation as we have the parking area downtown, which is that, yes, in November. At uh, you know, three o'clock in the morning, nobody's parked there, but that's not what this is about. This is a very complex environment. It easily uh, but uh accessed by lots of children all by themselves. Last weekend, there were adults and children jumping off the bridge into the water. Right? I mean, so it's like a super used space and, and to not attempt to do something, so we, we. Uh, avoid an accident. I think that would really be tragic. My last comment is there is not really a good example on the document or where snow might go. And so it's, it sounds as if they're going to pile it up on the sidewalk. That it needs to be much better specified as to how they're going to handle s- uh, snow as it piles up over the snowy winters. Thank you.
Uh, Kevin. Chairman, this is Adam Brodsky. Do you want us to try and respond to comments uh as the time they're made?
Store them up. That's a better idea.
Store, store them up for now. Um, Kevin?
Yeah, I'd just like to get some clarification on the parking that looks like it extends to the south from the. Area of the, in the vicinity of the salt house. It looks like there's four, maybe four and a half spots that extend. Uh, off the southwest corner of the south of the salt house part of the drawing. And I'm concerned it looks like for at least spots one, two, and three over half and sometimes close to all of spot like one. Um, and perhaps most of spot two. Extend into the public right of way, the pedestrian right of way, the sidewalk. Um, I'd like some clarification on that. It seems like this discussion regarding the parking has been centered on the area. Um. Over in the, in the right, um, where there's uh more separation between the parking and the. Public pedestrian right of way, which is maintained. But I'm concerned in that area in the vicinity of the salt house that that pedestrian right of way is not maintained. When I see parking spots drawn into that. And it looks like if you put a, a car in there, it would be extending all the way across the pedestrian right of way. When I see parking spots drawn into that, and it looks like if you put a, a car in there, it would be extending all the way across the pedestrian right of way. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Deirdre?
My only concern still with the ADA parking spaces, that, that's. I, I have reservations on that, you know, you have to remember, not everyone comes in a van, they might come in their own private car. And, um. That's, I just, it just seems tight right there. I, 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 I agree, I like the, the parallel possibility much better. I have to be honest, we have a very good friend who is handicap and we travel with him many times and. Um, most of these kinds of, uh. Sites that we have been to like Cohasset's Wharf. Uh, usually don't have a lot of spaces, they have what is required, but they do have enough to- enough space for a door to swing open. And the spaces are usually parallel to each other, not in this L shape. That makes me a little anxious about. Various vehicles backing up and being pinned in. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Uh, Chris?
Uh, I'll be brief. I agree with the concerns that have been raised about traffic and parking, so I would appreciate, um, some resolution of those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Clark?
Yeah, I think, uh, the last, uh, meeting we had on my notes, um, uh, I, I indicated that there. That, that the street front, which is off, off the, uh. The public side of the, of the property line, I'd like to see some, some options for. Um, what, uh, the street parking slash sidewalk, um, in the public way. Um, what, what options. Uh, could be afforded based on the, um, the island and the curb cut that the. Um, applicant has provided. I, I don't see any options, but I understood that, um. That, uh, that there's a, a group that's been meeting on trying to strategize the best arrangement for. Um. Um, parking all around the harbor and that this applicant has agreed to participate in. In, uh, striping or, um, coordination with whatever comes out of that. I, and I think that's a, that's an adequate, um, adequate, uh, answer. Uh, that, that they'll continue to, to try to optimize the on-street parking. Based on what they're, what they're, they're going to be doing with their project. Um, I, I will, uh, follow up on the comments made on, on the handicap parking location as a. As a registered architect that has worked on many developments. Um, the, the goal is always to have the handicap spots as close as possible to the building. Um, but, uh, the, 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 the number of spots are, is based on the total number in, in the project and. Uh, two spots are required for up to fifty. One of those spots has to be a, a van spot. Um, but, uh, in the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board under Figure twenty-three B, it allows shared. Um, access, uh, loading. Um, which if the two spots were parallel, you could have only five foot of shared loading for two spots. In this example, you have a twenty by twenty area that, uh, can be used for, um, the access. Um, the access aisle, not the parking spot. Um, uh, I, I don't think there, there needs to be a, a parking spot right in front of the retail use. If there's a handicap accessible route to that, to that space. Um, to that retail space. So I, I see the configuration is, as a, as an excellent. Um, way to configure the, the handicap access with, um, quite a bit more access, um, loading than, than what's required. I, I, I will repeat what I said in, in previous meetings, and I think the adaptive reuse of this, um. Um, sort of a, I guess, a white elephant facility, um, as it's come, is, is excellent. I think that the, the design team has done a, a really good, really good job trying to strategize the best. Possible uses of the site and maximize the parking. Um, you know, I, I will, I will say with, without the salt house being a part of this solution, I know there are some, some dedicated spots that are. That are over there, I, I, if it's not a part of the project. Um, uh, and, uh, this site isn't using up those spots. Um, I guess, I, I, I think that's, that's all right. I think those are the, those are the main, main, um, things attorney, um. Um, Adam Bronski has, has said in terms of light trespass, and I think, um, there's, um, um, uh. Some documents that have been submitted for, uh, making sure stuff doesn't go into the water. I, I mean, I just think this is such an excellent, um. Project for the harbor and the, and Cohasset as a community. Um, I, I think that the moves that have been done, um, uh, I think as sort of a maximum feasible compliance should be em- embraced. Uh, as they're configured. But I think that as things evolve, um, with the construction and the on-street parking. Uh, it provided that the applicant is willing to, um, make some modifications that, uh, might be in everyone's interest. Or, or add a couple of spots on the, um, on the public wayside. Um, anything that would support making the, the project and the use of it safer for people of all ages and physical abilities. I think is, um, I think, um, uh, w- would be in, in, um. A, a common goal for, for what our board, uh, is interested in and what the, what the applicant i- is really interested as well. I mean, there is, there is a dedicated sidewalk that won't runs, um, along the, the, the harbor to the, um. To the south and along the water and across the front of these buildings. It, there is sort of a no man's land, um, at the lobster pound, salt house, um. Uh, area that I believe is, it, you know, it's, it's partly public, public property. Um, uh, partly a part of the site. Um, and to the extent that, um, the committee, uh, that's looking at. On-street parking can work with the applicant on finding the best solution without losing parking spots. Um, and maybe gaining parking spots on street. Uh, I think that, that they, they need to put their heads together and, and, uh, find the, find those solutions. Terms of what the ZBA does, in terms of their decision for a shared parking approval. Um, I, I don't, I don't see any reason to interfere with what, what they're doing, but certainly if there's something that jumps out at, at us that. Um, um, uh, when that decision gets made. Um, we, we could certainly in our decision reserve the right to, um, uh, temper whatever is in that decision. Those are all my comments.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions or we want to have a discussion about.
Oh, well, uh, yeah, Deirdre, before I get to mine, go ahead.
I am sorry, one more last comment, just regarding the demolition. Um, I know, uh, it would be really, I think prudent. If the applicant involved, and I'd like to hear her response from our harbor master. She's had seventeen years experience in that harbor. She is, when we come to the demolition, I, I think they are willing to have that conversation so that she is part of. She should be part of this whole conversation about how we're going to protect the harbor. And from, from debris, et cetera. So that's my only comment is that I think that Lori Gibbons should be. Front and center when it comes to that conversation. That was it. Thank you.
All right, um, my only comments are kind of echoing some of the things I said earlier. I, I, you know, Adam and I will respectfully disagree about our jurisdiction over parking, but there's. And, uh, I think we can, um, certainly go ahead and condition. You know, the existence of a satellite lot, we don't have to wait until its existence, but we can condition it like the zoning board is thinking before certain permits issue. And there's no reason we can't have a, the decisions similar to the zoning board. And I don't understand them to be thinking about anything that's different than what I might be thinking about it as a condition, so. You know, but we can certainly close a hearing and condition future parking and the over, the satellite lot issues in a, in a, in a decision. On this handicap space issue, you know, just, I, I don't know the ins and outs of the ADA requirements, but just. Simple layman logic is telling me can't space fourteen be swapped somewhere else? And do, do they have to be together in the same spot, you know? Amy's asking about the lobster pound side of the site. You know, could lot, space fourteen be swapped with space three, four, or five? I, I, I don't know, but I, 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 I tend to go with our, our consultant's, uh, view on this. And I strongly urge the applicant to, uh, consider re, you know, lo- relocating lot fourteen, uh, uh, space fourteen somewhere else. Um, I have no problem, you know, conditioning the fire truck thing be done in the future, again, with some deadline. That we assured that a fire truck radius has been done, but, uh. You know, again, overall, I think this is a great project for Cohasset. We, we have some challenges with parking, but I think we can deal with them. So, Adam.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, rather than, uh, you know, you, I'm sure you're keeping a laundry list, but, um. Let me just add to, let me add to your list and see first if we have any members of the public who have any comments, um. Or suggestions, and then we can, you can deal with all responses to everybody at once. So is there anybody from the public, Lauren, do we have, whoever's sharing the screen, you can stop that now so I can see here, but, uh. Um, Lauren, do we have any public comment? I don't see anything in the Q and A.
No, there's nothing in the Q and A at this time.
Okay.
I think they just brought this diagram up because it shows the, uh, turning radius.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. Adam, if you want to go ahead and address what you've just heard from the members of the board, go.
Well, thank you. I, I'm going to briefly offer my comments. I know that Susan would like to weigh in, and I'd, I'd ask Gabe weigh in as appropriate.
All right.
Well, I, I just, I just want to assure, um, Ms. Glassmeyer. That we took great pains to make sure that there is handicap access to the entire building. It just so happens that the handicap spots are located where they are. And that in fact, it's a direct shot into the public restrooms, the coffee shop. Um, and, and, but I want to assure her that, that, uh, there's handicap accessibility throughout the entire building. I, I'm also very sensitive to that issue. A, a member of my family uses a wheelchair regularly. I believe that Mr. Brewer confirmed, uh, that he believes that we conform to the ADA requirements. Um, uh, but, you know, we're, we're happy to look at that a- a- again, but we don't want to change the cycle. Really got to get this thing done and, and moving. And if it's something that needs to be changed later, uh, perhaps it's something we can consider.
The shared access aisle is allowed under Figure twenty-three B in M A A B.
With respect to traffic, I would just remind the planning board that the. Current use, which can be reactivated, is a four hundred person function hall. And that the uses being proposed are a fraction of what can lawfully be continued at the site. And there's no question historically there have been huge traffic conflicts. We think that this is a dramatic appro- improvement. However, you don't need to take our word for it. Uh, we are, uh, going to be obligated by the zoning board, uh, to do a study. Um, uh, at particular times, including, I, I believe that, that this summer months when it's busier. I mean, we can't solve all of the areas' traffic problems. Uh, but we will, uh, cooperate and actively participate with the working group. Um, because there are solutions, but unfortunately, all of those solutions are going to be off-site. Within the public way, and we have no control over that. Um, so again, we're not averse to doing a study, um, uh, but that, that is addressed by the zoning board. Uh, I'll ask Gabe to address snow removal, or S- S- Susan. I just want to make clear the four existing parking spaces on the western side of the site. Um, that encroach into the layout are not being counted as parking spaces associated with this project. And so they currently exist. Uh, I don't know if that's an issue for the town or the old soul house, but that's not part of our parking calculation. And so we're not counting, uh, that. Um, they'll remain unless some other arrangements are, 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 are made. Um, with respect to, uh, uh, demolition. Uh, I, I don't know whether there was a specific comment from a harbor master, but, you know, all of this was distributed to all of the boards. Um, and, and departments still listening comments on that. And our, we have a very detailed construction methodology. Um, and protections that have been, uh, reviewed by the Conservation Commission as well as other departments. We're not trying to cut out the harbor master, but there's been a lot of scrutiny, a lot of detail, uh, that was presented. That ultimately was found to be adequate, uh, by the Conservation Commission. Again, if you want to condition the boom to be extended further, I think we're south, southeast, uh, we have no problem with that. Um, uh, Mr. Burke talked about our, our commitment to solving the larger problem. O- obviously, if after our traffic study, there are issues that we need to address, we're obligated to come back and deal with that. And if, if there are changes within the, the street layout, we'll, we'll support that. We, we want this project to be a success. And so if there are parking issues, we're going to have to solve them. And, and with respect to conditions, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if the, the playing board simply wants to condition the provision of ten additional parking spaces. Um, as a condition of a building permit, we have no problem with that. That would duplicate what the planning board, uh. Uh, well, excuse me, with the zoning board, um, is, 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 has told us is going to be a, a condition. Um, but we're not in a position to present that information to now. Uh, and, uh, we hope it's not necessary prior to the close of the public hearing, because it's, uh, it's complicated. Uh, but we're motivated to do it because we want a building permit and we want to activate the space which has been dark for too long. So, so Gabe, do you want to talk about snow removal? And then I know Susan, Susan has some comments, or one or both.
Yeah, hi, sorry, I was muted here. Um, so we designated the area between both aisles, uh, as the snow storage area. Um, now, we have to remember, this site is a, um, it's clam shells. Uh, so plowing is going to be, uh, it's going to be a little bit tougher. Um, but pretty much, uh, we're going to have infiltration in that area. Um, so. We designated this area as a snow removal area. However, the sidewalks, uh, should be able to hold some. They're wide enough in order to comply with ADA. And, uh, have some room there, um, but that would be getting into, uh, larger storms. Um, and it is something, uh. Uh, it is something we, we considered in, around the site, and this area was the most feasible area.
Susan, are you muted? I don't know whether you can. Comment?
I think we just had a brief interruption. Where I didn't hear anything for about five seconds, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gabe was just describing the reasoning behind, uh, our snow storage area in that location, that's all, but I know that you wanted to comment.
Yeah, I do have one, um. S- sorry, uh, my name's Susan Hoadley. I am with Hoadley Martinez Architects, and, uh, I'd like to, um. Just briefly speak to Commissioner Glassmeyer and Commissioner Hobson's, um, comments about, uh, the placement of the ADA. Spots, which, um, I understand because they, they're sort of counterintuitively. Uh, located away from where you would naturally expect them to be at the begin, at the, uh, entry of the, uh, ramp that goes up to the restaurant. The reason we had those there initially, and the reason that we moved them over to, uh, what I'll say is the water side. Is that that edge is a very important community place for people that bring people who are elderly, infirm, and differently able. Um, I recently, uh, gave palliative care to an elder. And this was what, this was really the only place in town where you could go and park your car. And get a really unobstructed view of water and horizon. So, for that reason, this is a very important place for that purpose, and that's why we moved the handicap spots. Uh, over to, to that area so that it could provide a, a place for respite and enjoyment of the water. People who are confined to their car and potentially, uh, could use. Um, the, the relief of getting out and, um, making use of the complex. The, if, uh, Karina, if you could put up the map that shows the accessible path. The, if, uh, Karina, if you could put up the map that shows the accessible path of travel. Okay, can everyone see it? Okay, great. So the pink, the, 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 the bold pink, uh, perforated line uh, represents the accessible path of travel. Any reclaimed brick that you see that would go over with a wheelchair would be set flush so that it is considered fully accessible. You will be able to, uh, bring your wheelchair from one end of the site to the other as well as having a very quick, um, way to get into the coffee shop and the restrooms that are right inside. So that's why we, that's why we placed those spots there.
Amy, briefly, I'd like to try to wrap this up, so.
Uh, yes, I'd like to just say, uh, thank you to Mr. Brodsky for his elaboration. I don't know if you know this, but a lot of the time, the boards don't know what the other boards have done because we have meetings that are not concurrent. And as a result, what happens with the, the, the ZBA, we may not actually know what's being said. So that's why if, if it sounds redundant, it's not intentional. Or to be antagonistic, it simply is because we don't actually know. The second point about the, the question of the, the handicap spots is, is also not one to be antagonistic or to be, um, argumentative. It's just that when, when you have a retail function and somebody is going to want to hop in and hop out and go, uh, it, you would think that it would make sense to have something that's really accessible to them from a parking perspective, so they weren't having to navigate too much. Or if they were going to be in a position where somebody wanted to stay and they wanted to use a handicap spot for a length of time, it would seem to be counterintuitive because somebody that's seeking something retail is probably going in for just a short time and then li- moving. And that was just why I asked that question.
No, thank you, Ms. Glassmeyer. Just as a point of information, the retail lobster operation is a very small part of it. It's a predominantly wholesale lobster operation. But again, we have every interest in facilitating, you know, public access for everyone. And so that, it was very helpful for Susan to explain at least our, our reasoning and to, to make sure, uh, that, that we're doing, uh, doing our best job.
Yep.
All right, um, before we wrap, like, Lauren and Carolyn, anything that you, any comments or suggestions and thoughts that you have? We'll start with Lauren.
Thank you. I have no comments, Chad.
Carolyn, anything we should be on the lookout for?
Uh, no, I, 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 I just think that we do want to be careful when it comes to conditions. It would be, um, obviously nice if we had the ZBA decision so that if they are going to overlap, um, it'd be better for all of us if they are not conflicting with each other. Um, now that'll become a, a, a little bit of a, a problem, say, for our building commissioner and, and others going forward. So if we could avoid a conflict, that would be good.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't anticipate that happening. Lauren, m- mental note to memo to Woody, move it, move it on, move it along, okay? All right, uh, so what's the board's pleasure here? Um, if we close this hearing, and again, I think there's a lot of conditions like the satellite parking, we can do with proper conditions now. Um, we have twenty-one days. We're meeting on the twenty-eighth, which is twenty-one days, so we can, we can vote on conditions and have three weeks to, to consider some conditions, and we hopefully would have the zoning boards within those twenty-one days. Um, is the board's pleasure to close the hearing? I'm okay with closing it based on the issues that I see that are outstanding, that we can deal with in conditions, so. But, um, if we want to continue this, I wouldn't continue it past the twenty-eighth. I want to get, I think we need to get this brought to, to conclusion, so.
I think we're at, at the point where we could close.
Okay, all right, can I entertain him? What, yeah, Amy, were you going to say something?
No.
Oh, okay. Did somebody say something? No, okay. All right, yeah, then can I entertain a motion to close the hearing subject to, uh, the writing of conditions?
I entertain a motion to close the hearing subject to conditions.
Okay, second that, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Plucks.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Sorry, Deirdre Hobson, I.
Plucks, I.
Okay, good. Uh, Adam, we are meeting on the twenty-eighth. We'll anticipate, uh, having the conditions finalized there if we need to extend beyond the twenty-one days for whatever reason. I hope you'll be cooperative with that and, uh, we'll, we'll shoot for having them all done by the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, everyone. I, I know this is taking some time, but we're very grateful. It's, uh, it's going to be a great project.
Yep, hope so.
I agree. Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan and your team.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, anybody need a break? Anybody need a quick five-minute break?
Aren't we done with our agenda?
No, we have one more issue to deal with. Um, we have a lot of people here.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, sorry.
So.
I skipped ahead.
All right, now, if anybody needs a break, we'll plow on. All right, so our next, uh, matter is the continued uh, Village District Special Permanent Site Plan Review for fifty-five South Main Street. Um, and just before we get to the, everybody and get started here, um, we, you know, the planning board has a requirement to get new materials to us in advance of our hearing by at least a week so that we have time for the board to review, and then where we are using outside peer review to have our peer reviewer, uh, look at things. So we did not get those updated materials in time, and so we do not have an updated peer review. So, um, I've already alerted, uh, Ms. Malatesta that we will be likely continuing this till the twenty-eighth to deal with that. Um, I don't, uh, really want to get into then the board making detailed comments without having seen our peer reviews. So we'll defer all of that to the twenty-eighth. What I do want to do tonight, however, is that a new, new plans and a new design has been submitted. Allow the applicant to, uh, present that as, uh, um, you know, our meeting is not going as long as we thought it would, and, uh, I had suggested to Ms. Malatesta that this be quick, but you can have a little time to do this. Um, I'm then going to ask Lauren to summarize our public comment to date, which has been largely based on the old design, but just to quickly summarize that. And then, members of the public who are watching today, who may be seeing the new design for the first time, we will allow a period of public comment. As far as the board's members, again, I don't, I don't think we should get into super levels of detail uh, absent our peer review, but if you have some quick thoughts about the redesign or anything that you might see as a problem to be addressed then on the twenty-eighth, I think it's in fairness to the applicant, we should raise those. So with, without further ado, Cassie or John, whoever's going to take the lead here, uh, if you want to present this, Richard. Uh, and, well, let me first say, Jim Reed, and I see you're here. I, I, you I'm correct that you don't have your peer review ready for, to go tonight? We, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, that's correct. We, we have yet to see the application materials.
Okay, so you're just here to observe for good, all right, so we're playing on the twenty, but having something to us back for the meeting on the twenty-eighth then?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so, uh, Cassie, John, whoever, whoever is going to present, you know, feel free to present your new, your new materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's going to be Cassie Malatesta.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it and appreciate everyone's time tonight. I know it's getting late. So we do have a brief update, updated presentation just to show everyone, um, over the course of the past month. Um, we did spend, um, a rigorous amount of time just listening and being thoughtful with the next steps here. Um, and just wanted to say thank you for everyone's time who's met with me personally, who's written letters, um, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I think it's all been very informative and very helpful, um, so thank you so much. And so Ted and Donnie, we are just going to show a, a quick presentation on, on where we are today.
No, and thank you, Cassie, and I want to reiterate Cassie's comments, and thank you to the board and to the chair. So I understand we do have a limited time, so I'm trying to be brief. In general, um, the, the project is the same size. It's still twelve residential units with eighteen off-street parking spaces and two commercial spaces. Um, the FAR is, is still below one point three. Uh, and the building height to the center line of the gable roof, uh, facing Main Street is less than thirty-five feet. And our, uh, maximum coverage on the lot is less than eighty percent and about seventy percent. Uh, the, the biggest changes that have occurred have been really on the roof line. And the overall impact on the building as it relates to the context, uh, we worked closely to, uh, focus on, uh, creating a series of gabled roofs and double-hung windows, uh, while also, uh, providing inset dormers uh, without balconies that relate to the street facade. The ground floor is very similar in terms of the amount of storefront, uh, opportunities for signage and operable awnings that project out in the street. Uh, we have continued to flank, uh, the site with two outdoor plaza spaces, uh, which you see here, uh, facing, uh, South Main. And just to give you a quick virtual walk-around, uh, as you relate, move down South Main Street, get a broader view of the facade, uh, working with the rhythms of the gable roofs and the dormers which are shed and pulled back from the edge of the roof line. Uh, there'll be detailing, uh, with casings and, and sill and apron details, um, as well as, uh, you know, projected eaves to create, uh, good shadow lines along the edges of the street. Uh, the materials are going to be painted. We're proposing painted white clavoured siding. Uh, the roof is, it's hard to depict at this, uh, scale of the rendering, but would be cedar shake shingles uh, with sheet metal edges around the perimeter. Our streetscape is very important in the earlier, uh, meetings that we had is to maintain uh, universal access around the site. So maintaining accessibility, uh, between brick pavers and street trees, I, that, of course, will help, uh, advance a very important aspect of design at the pedestrian scale. And just as you move along the street, this is where the easement occurs with the James Brook easement. Uh, we've added faux columns that could be removed without interrupting the structure of the building. Uh, still maintaining a head clearance of over twelve feet if any acts had to occur to, uh, that location for the easement. Uh, and you get a sense of this streetscape, which I think would be really tremendous with the amount of transparency to the commercial spaces, uh, the awnings that can project, uh, and certainly with some planters at the ground level, the pedestrian level, I think will really help liven and green that whole streetscape. And you see here with the painted, uh, balusters, uh, which would have, uh, balcony doors that open up to the inside. So this is a generally, um, the look at this point. And gives a sense of the pedestrian experience walking down the street, turning the corner. One of the things we also did, I do want to add to that, we did ha- we do have off-street parking with access still maintained on parking way. We're depressing that parking about three feet and screening it with, uh, trees and, uh, understory plantings, uh, where it was once covered and open. Uh, we have now, uh, added in garage doors, uh, that will be operable to serve the parking, uh, beyond and whilst maintaining some of the off-street parking, uh, behind the plantings. Uh, and then just some of the details. I think at this point, you know, are obviously looking to refine those details in the later phases and work in some of the nuances of, of how, um, uh, the relationships of, of the trim uh, will work to advance, you know, some of the light and shadow. Uh, but I think this could really help, uh, maintain consistency and connect to the context in a meaningful way. So I think that's, you know, just to try to give everybody a brief overview. I know that you have some thoughts and comments. We're looking forward to your feedback, and, uh, I'm sure there's some questions that we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else, Cassie, from your team, want to say anything?
No, I think we're just looking forward to understand if the members of the planning board are, are excited about this new direction, um, before we take the further steps. With, um, Jim and Weston and Sampson, we have met with his team once, um, with members of the town, and so before we kind of make the next, the step into, um, the twenty, the meeting of the twenty-eighth, we just wanted to make sure that the direction, everyone's comfortable with it, um, so we can move forward accordingly.
Thank you. All right, so from the board, again, we don't have our peer review. We don't want to get into excruciating detail, but if members of the board have some initial gut reactions to the new design in any direction they would like to give to the applicant, uh, briefly, please do, and we'll start.
And there's also a member of the audience.
Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll get to the public. I'm aware of it. Um, Kevin, we'll start with you.
Um, I just want to confirm, I heard correctly, there are, um, how many residential units and how many of those would be, uh, qualified for, um, low-income, uh, housing?
So right now, there are twelve units, um, in totality on-site, and we are further exploring, um, affordability on-site versus off-site.
So I would just stress that the affordability is going to be a key question and something within the, um, board's purview, and I would like to see that addressed sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Yeah, they, they, they have to re- I think the minimum requirement here is two, two, uh, units. And, uh, you know, when Cassie first brought this redesign to my attention, and I told her, you know, that we weren't going to have the peer review in time, I did bring up to her that the issue of affordability and the decision whether these are rentals or condos still await decision, and they, you know, they do have to address both those issues at some point, so. Uh, point well taken, Kevin. Anything else?
Uh, no, I do, I do like some of the additional details, some of the softening of the edges, um, some of the shed dormers, um, those are all appealing. Um, you know, pictures only get you so far, so I guess I would like some, um, you know, further details as this moves along, but I think you're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Deirdre?
I, uh, echo Kevin's comments regarding the affordable housing and obviously the rental and uh, condo piece. Um, I think we're headed in the right direction. I do like much more what I'm seeing. I'm not crazy about those, sorry to be very picky, and I won't go too long, those, those windows on the corners that are smack against each other. Um, that's a very, very specific detail. I don't know if there's any way to move them apart so they're not smashed up on the corners to each other. Maybe it's just the way the rendering came in, but anyway, I think you're headed in the right direction. Um, but I am going to be pretty, pretty much a stickler about the affordable housing piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris? Chris?
So, uh, appreciate the updates very much. Uh, the next time around, I would appreciate more context with the other buildings in the village just so we could see how it blends in a little more with the red line and also the buildings on the other side, just so we could see how it all fits together uh, with the buildings adjacent, so. This is one, I think, the, the last time around, you had more views. That gave a little more context of how it would look in the village, so, uh, I do think it's a big improvement, and thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Clark?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the team's evolved the design, uh, so that it fits the context, uh, quite a bit, uh, better than what, what they had before, so, um, I applaud the, the effort. Um, the, the, there's, um, th- there's still an issue on parking way or James Lane of, uh, of delivery trucks hitting the, hitting the awning that I'd brought up before. I, I, I think it, those look like they're retractable awnings, so maybe, um, maybe it's less likely, yeah, that one. Um, a- as well as the only other design comment, I guess I, I would say, because I, I mean, I think that it's come a long way. This, this has sort of, um, uh, a turn of the century kind of fit. Um, some of the details of the dormers may need to evolve, but, but, uh, I think what you've, what you've got here, um, is, is, is really good. Um, the, the area over the parking, um, garages, it, it looks like there's a, a, and a kind of an angled soffit. And I would suggest to the design team that you, you look at, uh, maybe some other options for that. It, it kind of, um, if, it feels like, uh, even though it's the parking area, um, it, it feels like it, it, it needs something, um, needs something else other than just an angle thing that, that, uh, uh, it runs over the parking. And I don't know what the head clearance is, uh, for delivery trucks, uh, but those would be the kinds of things that I would, um, focus on for that area, just some options that, uh, can make it look a little nice and make sure you don't have a headroom, uh, with truck, uh, problem. Um, but far and away, I think the design's evolved, um, successfully. And I'll reserve any other comments for after we get a peer review.
Thank you, Clark.
Thank you.
Ted, I was just going to ask, Ted, is that angled or is that just cantilevered? Uh, the shadowing might be a little deceiving.
No, it's angled. I think just to convey, there's dimensional reason for that between the ground floor, the parking clearances, and the turnarounds. Um, I think what we can develop, and we've been sketching through this, is adding some potential I think what we can develop and we've been sketching through this is adding some potentially some brackets in here. That could give it a little bit of additional detailing underneath the soffit, but.
Something, because it's just a big generic soffit space and, and the angle is, is sort of funny that I, I think needs to be tempered.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be developing, it's been on our list to look at further, you know, brackets and, and trim details down there that will make that feel more. Consistent with the other detailing on the project.
Yeah, and like on the alley, maybe a column on either end. That, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be structural, but could be. Without one in the middle that would inhibit parking.
Yeah, it's definitely the clearances around that are tough, but we'll, we'll definitely study it more.
Okay, thank you, Clark. My, my thoughts will be brief, again, I too focused on the affordability, the. And, you know, the decision of rental versus condo is important to the overall affordability. We get more bang for the buck with a rental project and a condo project. You know, the high, I, I, I want to say overall, I think this design is a vast improvement and, you know, I'm, I'm listening with. Great amusement, the architect will go back and forth about little details, but that, you know, I'll leave it to the architects to come. You know, deal with those little details, but I think this is a vast improvement and going in the right direction. For the feel for Cohasset Village as opposed to what was proposed before, which was a nice building, it just wasn't for Cohasset. The affordability, we're going to of course scrutinize the height. calculation again, but. I, I understand where you're coming from on that and I, you know, I think this design is, is certainly much different and doesn't raise the same kind of concerns. And. I was trusting now, I forgot what my other thought was going to be. Ah, never mind, well, I, I, again, I think this is, we're going in the right direction here, so. Uh, that's all I'll say for now, I, I don't have anything else to add, anything that I mentioned to Cassie when she called me. She's aware of and if it's something I forgot now, she, she's heard it before, so. Amy, you're the last one on the board to comment, would you like to say?
Thank you, and I really appreciate the effort of the team to. Listen to what the community had to say, but also I think have the insight to evolve an idea. Into something that, that I think people will feel much more association with. And so that's really positive, I really have only three comments. One is the, the utilities on the roof. It doesn't look bad from the street, but it, it does look kind of complicated and not so pretty. From anywhere else above it, so is there anything that can be done to, to shade that? The second is, is I would be very. Cautious about using white, I think that white will make the space. You know, you, you mentioned what color the building might look, I think that there's lots of ways to make the colors soft. Without having to have it be white and it will be much easier to take care of than if it's stark white. And then lastly, the intersection between, well, really the sort of continuance of the. The lane into the, the town parking area, that's going to be a real challenge and I think we're going to have to do something as. Potentially unpleasant as having a light that is letting people know that they are crossing a street and people are coming in and out of it. Because it's, it's, you're basically creating a, 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 a much sharper edge and people are going to have a hard time seeing around it. And so we want to think about what is it, whether you have, you can know, you can use lit up floor level lights. When people are coming out of a garage, at my work, we have those and so. The people walking across the sidewalk know that, that there's a vehicle coming, but there's going to have to be something. That, that really alerts people to what's going on because it's, they're going to be looking up and they're not going to be looking. Around and they might have an accident. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, next Lauren, I want to turn to you both with your planner hat, if you have any thoughts or comments on this. And then if you could, I want you to, we, we got a lot, a lot of written comments on this project. And most of those were submitted with the previous design, so if you could maybe briefly summarize. Pros and cons and, and for the cons, you know, was it mostly because of the design or some other issues? And then if there's any written comment we have gotten since these new plans have been filed. If you could just summarize that for us and then we'll get to the live public that's here tonight. So Lauren, you have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, to summarize the comments, we received the majority of comments on this application before the new plans are submitted. And in a nutshell, I can summarize that and that there was a lot of sort of visceral reaction to the initial design as the board. Was of similar sentiment, a lot of concern about what that looked like, however, the overwhelming majority of people. Whether or not they liked the design, they were overwhelmingly supportive of this property being redeveloped. There was not a single comment that I got that was, please leave this alone and let it remain a gas station, everyone was encouraged and excited. About the prospect of new redevelopment in the village, particularly the site and the opportunity for mixed use structure here, but there was a lot of. Request for attention to the detail and design and. As I see in this revised plan set, the, the applicant has been very responsive to that and tweaked accommodatively. And I just echo the board's sentiments about affordable housing, I'm really interested in seeing how the applicant plans to fulfill that. Other than that, I really have nothing else to add at this time, I think you've made a lot of salient comments and just echoing the concern about pedestrian. Connectivity, given that this will be sort of a new dynamic for people who are not. Previously used to this development as it is today, so other than that, that's really all, you got one comment in addition. After the new submission, that was just overwhelmingly supportive of the project moving forward. And with that, I would anticipate that we'll get more public comments, so I'll keep you. Up to speed as things progress the next meeting, other than that, I have nothing else to add at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, if you could, I see that. In the Q and A, we had Dave Farrag, so he, he, he'll get to go first for the public comment, but if you could promote him, but in the meantime, while you're doing that. I see Jim Reardon has his hand up and Jim, I give you have some. Initial gut reactions, please share them.
Oh, thank you very much, Tom, and, and I just wanted to say that, you know, we're, we're pleased to see the new direction and. Glad to hear that this appears to be working out well for the planning board. You know, lots of good comments, of course. The question that I had is whether we would be receiving new application materials. I believe the materials that are on the website are the previous application materials. And this presentation, and I didn't know when those would be forthcoming because we don't be able to give, begin our review until we receive those, of course.
Cassian, you don't have to give an instant response to that, but be cognizant that we need your materials in a timely manner. And, and our peer reviewer needs more than just, you know, the, the new drawing, so.
I think that we're.
Give us that information, sorry, we'll give that right over to Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna say, I think we're open to, to guidance there, but we just saw this as an amendment to the third floor roof lines primarily. And so the application would just include these additional materials that, that you've seen tonight and that we provided last week, if that's sufficient for you, Jim.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, Jim Reardon, why don't you. Make it clear through Lauren to them what you would be looking for. And if you could do that by, you know, tomorrow or certainly by Friday at the latest. So we're not, we're, we're not held up with last minute issues again about submission, so. If there's additional materials you'd like to see, Jim, let Lauren know that, Lauren pass that along if you could to the applicant.
Be happy to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Dave Farrag, you out there?
Uh, yes, can, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, from the last time that the planning board had met regarding this project. The new and improved plans are, are aesthetically are an immense improvement on it. And, and it certainly, you know, falls into the village design guidelines and, and. What, not only the letter of the laws, but the spirit of it with the new design, so. Like, you know, I think it's great and I know there's, you know, there's the peer review that has to happen, there's a lot of nuts and bolts things that will happen from that. But aesthetically, the, the, the new design is, is an immense improvement over the previous one. And as far as the area with the parking way. Getting the sidewalk over there is going to be a, a very big improvement, I know in the previous comments that I made, it was about the width of it. You know, for cars, but if you can't get as much width there, getting the sidewalk there would certainly be. A, a vast improvement because currently the parking way is the sidewalk where people walk on and you have, you have vehicles and. People who are on bikes and people who are on strollers and, and people walking as they're going to the town parking lot, so. Getting that sidewalk will be a, a very important improvement in the village as well, so. I'll keep it brief because I know it's been a, a long meeting and there's more to look at with everything on this, but aesthetically, it's a, it's a great improvement.
Okay, and for the record, your address.
Oh, I'm so sorry, David Frog, 39 Beachwood, Street Unit Four.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there, are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard or put something in the Q and A? I see nothing in the Q and A at the moment.
Wayne Sawchuck is raising his hand in the audience, I'm going to promote him.
Okay. I can't see whether he's.
He's here now, Wayne.
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne, as soon as you're ready, go ahead.
Good, thank you. I'm very pleased with these plans.
Name and address, please.
Wayne Sawchuck, 432 Beachwood Street, Cohasset, and I'm the owner of the 1811 Samuel Bates House. At 35 to 39 South Main and I own the property that abuts the, the townway. At 45 rear South Main Street. So I'm pleased with what's being done with the section of the town walkway. I wonder if maybe we could. Implement a little bit more brick rather than concrete. And I'm willing to extend our sidewalk with some nice city hall pavers and stuff like that and make this a little bit more. In keeping with, you know, an, an era or a, a timeframe. Because this would be the only concrete sidewalk in the village. So that's just my only sort of like to see comment. I think the height of the building and the design is, is much, much better than the first one and I think it's just going to be terrific. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Wayne. With respect to the issue of improving Town Way, who owns it?
The town of Cohasset. And it's, it's 12 feet wide.
That would be a, that would be a public improvement, Tom.
Yeah, I, and I, you know, we, we debate this on the zoning bylaw committee event, you know. Other committees about, you know, having some kind of linkage to development, I know that I think on 1 Pleasant Street. They are redoing the sidewalk, that's public sidewalk in front of that site, just in front of that site, but. You know, if the applicant would consider contributing to some improvements to Town Way, I think it would benefit the property as much. As the town as a whole, so you can consider that, we can, I don't think we're in a position, Carolyn can correct me if. That we can mandate that, but it would be certainly something worth considering. To do.
Well, it looks like they are a lot of their property. They, they're taking care of half of the distance.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah. Okay, well, there's opportunities there for everybody to get together to make this. Much improved site for everyone, I, I know Town Way at the moment is still the test cases from years ago where we had lots of alternatives. For paving the village sidewalks that never went anywhere and I think all the examples are still there, there's like five or six. Different styles there and it does look kind of awful at this point, so. Anybody else in the public have anything to say in, in initial reaction to this? And anybody who is out there, you know, again, as Lauren mentioned, we've received an awful lot of written comment. Prior and we encourage everybody to do that again and, and get comments in before next year. Carolyn, anything that's jumping out at you that we need to be concerned about?
Just one question and I know when we were looking at the prior design. There was a side setback that was. Not going to be able to comply with the, the zoning bylaw. I wonder if, I, I don't know if that's changed at all, I'm not sure if that was on the. The proposed parking side of the site or not, but just if the applicant could address that.
Or Ted, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I, I, let me just slide the screen slightly, so we're, you're referring to the five foot. Plus setback adjacent to 20 parking way. And which is the side yard setback, so. We were referring to the table of area regulations under the village business district under note one, that we understand that that. Reducing that from 10 to 5 is allowable under the special permit. But we'll defer to council on that.
And my, my question really was whether or not you are still going to do, still intending to be. You know, five feet, five and a half feet, whatever it is, and it appears from the plane you've got up there, that yes.
Yes.
Yes, there are no changes to footprint setbacks, the, the only thing that we've amended here is, is the roof line. And the third floor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Carolyn, if you could just double check, I'll, I'll look at it too, but double check whether we can deal with that issue in our special permit. As opposed to going to the ZVA. All right, Cassie and John, I, I, you've heard a lot, quite a bit, I hope that's helpful to you. Again, we want to make the 28th meaningful, so. Whatever you get from Jim Reardon that he'd like to see, get it to him ASAP. And entertain a motion to continue this to September 28th at 6:00.
So moved.
22nd. Roll call, Clark?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Chris Flex, I.
Okay, thank you everyone and thank you Cassie, your team.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for our members, we look forward to seeing on the 29th, 28th.
All right, great, thanks, John.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Green, all right, so. When we were trying to kill time before, we were going through a few things, is there anybody else on the board who has any liaison reports? Anything else not anticipated in 48 hours that they'd like to bring up? Anybody?
No.
No, okay, then I'll take anybody. Anything else, Lauren, that we need to deal with, no?
I don't have anything for you, I'll see you all next week for training.
Oh boy, can't wait. And, all right, so Clark's made a motion to adjourn second.
Tom, if I could. There was a question earlier about getting information to Lauren about potential training topics, do you want those by email, Lauren?
Sure, however you want to, however you prefer.
I don't think anybody's looking to flood yet, just, you know, some thoughts.
Yeah, of course, yeah, send anything via email or if you want to call, I'm happy to take your, your recommendations.
Carolyn, is this intended to be like Planning Board 101 or?
It is, and, and I. Yes, so we'll, we'll, we'll do a couple of things, you know, we'll go over basic, the basics of chapter 48. And like what the roles are of the planning board under your specific bylaws. There's also some overlap obviously with the public records law, the open meeting law, the conflict of interest statute. But if anyone's got a specific area that they want covered. Just pass along to Lauren and let me know, the only thing that, you know, obviously. We can't discuss any specific project or a project that we think is going to be coming, you know, down the pipe. So, you know, if you want to talk about, for example, you know, how to measure the height of a building generally under the bylaw, that's one thing. But we're not going to talk about it in the context of a pending application.
Yeah, and. That reminds me, just one more thing to say, regarding the fall town meeting, it is. In the decision of the bylaw committee that we are probably not coming forward with anything, but Lauren has reserved a spot. In case some particular issue or some zoning issue comes up. So in terms of looking at our workload and what we would have to do if. If a zoning bylaw change is proposed, it's either going to be a citizen petition or from another committee, but. Probably do not anticipate anything from the bylaw committee and I'm. Probably do not anticipate anything from the bylaw committee and I'm not sure that this board has anything that's. Burning to bring forward in the fall, so. All right, other than that, we have the motion to adjourn, somebody seconded it, I think, so roll call, Clark?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Miss Black, I.
Okay, thank, thank you all, we've got to do a lot of work and I'll see you on the 20th, see you next week, but then see you on the 20th, yep. Okay, bye.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.